And one second lead.
So we'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like everyone to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 314.25, roll call, Mr. Hines.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mr. Rashawn.
Present.
Mr. Ambrose.
Present.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
Ms. Hines, present, and President May?
Present.
Everyone's here, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 315.25, adjournment to a closed session. I would like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Mr. Cox?
Yep.
Uh, Dr. Weaver?
No.
No, close it, okay. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? And President May?
Yes.
Okay, closed session.
Thank you.
Calling our meeting to order. It is now 7:04 PM. I will entertain a motion to move back into open session, please.
We took care of that in there.
We did, we closed it, we didn't open it.
Okay, uh, so moved.
Support.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at 317.25, recognitions and presentations. Our first recognition is, um, a student recognition, student recognition presentation, Dr. Jennifer Page.
I believe we have a video to play too, but we are here today to honor one of our youngest students in the district. Carl Gerhardt is here, he was the recipient of a state award, there's a little video, and then his picture with Saska has something to say, and Carl and his family also has something to share with us.
Dr. Page, we're waiting to get the video up.
Oh, okay.
There it goes.
This evening's going to be in the area of arts, it's hoping to have Carl Gerhardt from Stottlemyre Early Childhood Center in Wayne Westland Schools. Please join me on stage. Carl Gerhardt is a joyful and determined four-year-old student at Stottlemyre Early Childhood Center in Wayne Westland. Despite the challenges he faces due to Fox G1 syndrome, which impacts his motor skills, communication, and daily activities, Carl has found a remarkable way to express himself through art. For Carl, art is a journey focused on exploration rather than just the final product. He uses his hands, feet, and even his head to interact with various textures and materials, fully immersing himself in the creative process. Through these sensory experiences, Carl has developed important skills like hand-eye coordination and spatial awareness. His enthusiastic approach to art demonstrates a passion for learning and a curiosity that inspires everyone around him. Carl's creativity has also become a pathway for inclusion, allowing him to connect and build friendships with peers in the general education program. Through collaborative art projects and play sessions, Carl continues to break down barriers and foster a sense of belonging in his school community. His journey through art is a testament to resilience, creativity, and the limitless possibilities of a multi-sensory learning approach. The Michigan Council for Exceptional Children is pleased to award Carl Gerhardt the Yes I Can Award in the area of art.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Keely Gerhardt. My family and teachers are all over at the table right there. And, um, we're so excited to be here today to celebrate with all of you. This award means so much to our family. Carl was diagnosed with Fox G1 syndrome when he was two years old, and he has a lot of setbacks and a lot of barriers on the desire to overcome to get to where he is today. We're grateful for a wonderful support system at home, but, um, to be here to celebrate all of his successes in art with you is a true honor. And I wanted to extend a heartfelt thank you to this to all the staff at Carl's school. They're the ones that nominated him today, and I'm so grateful for their unwavering dedication. Every single day, they go above and beyond to care for him, and I truly couldn't ask for a better team. Sending him out to this world, being non-verbal, and having various needs can be so scary as a mom, but I can honestly say that he is in the absolute best hands possible, and your efforts mean the world to us.
The next award is going to be in the area of athletics.
All right, happy Monday, everyone. Thank you so much for coming to celebrate an amazing preschool student, Carl. As you can see, Carl uses his entire body to work on his art, and the Michigan Council for Exceptional Children not only accepted his nomination, but he won the state award for art. Massive round of our applause for our preschool student. And then I'm just going to invite some people down to give some things to Carl that they created. As everyone in here knows, it truly takes a village and a community to help all students learn, so we have some things to celebrate Carl.
All right, our first celebration is from Carl's SXI buddies in his class. This is one we made with spray paint, and we used some water and some eye powders. Lots of fun went into it, and Carl did help with the spray painting, too, but he got a little on the walls, which happened. Awesome work, Carl. Our next presentation for Carl is the High Five Award. These are two of his GSRP buddy teachers. So Carl's artwork not only helps him learn in his own classroom, but helps him foster relationships with kids around our Stottlemyre school.
And lastly, Carl communicates with a tablet, so we are going to see if Carl has anything he would like to say.
Why not?
Carl says, "Why not?" Anything else, Carl?
What?
What? Alrighty, and then Keely, is there anything you wanted to say?
I could say a little something.
Okay.
I didn't realize they were going to be playing my video. But I did want to add a little bit to that. So I mentioned that the staff at Stottlemyre go above and beyond to meet Carl's needs and make sure that he's taken care of. So there's a lot of needs Carl has, such as diaper changes, tube feeds, giving him endless opportunities to learn and creative ways to help him succeed. Sometimes he has behavior that's unpredictable, so giving him extra love and cuddles when he needs it. The office staff at Stottlemyre are always warm and welcoming when we come in, and they also are very inclusive with the entire school community. All the other classrooms are involved in his learning and his growing and his belonging. So I just wanted to send an additional thank you to all the staff throughout the entire building.
And just one more point for our pal Carl. If you have ever worked with Carl, ever been in his classroom, whether a support staff, teacher, administration, will you please stand? And if you are part of Carl's family or friend group, please stand as well. And Carl, I want to show you that all of these people are here for you, and thank you to your Wayne Westland team for supporting you and celebrating you. You are an amazing guy.
You're hiding in the back?
Thank you guys so much.
This is awesome.
All right, look at me, look this way. All right, I got him looking, good job.
He doesn't still have paint all over his legs and feet, does he? Thank you, everyone.
No, thank you all, thank you.
Nice job.
Very nicely done. Thank you for allowing us to take part in that. Next, we have our high school athletic team recognition, Mr. Toko.
Yes, thank you. Before I introduce our athletic directors at both schools, I just want to say, in my 30-plus years in education, this winter season was the most unique, amazing season that I've seen in regards to success for teams. So I just want to start by saying congratulations to both schools on your winter season, like they were I don't know if there's ever been a Final Four from Wayne of the girls and the boys in basketball. I mean, I'd love someone to tell me if there was, but I've never seen one, so. Before I move on, I just want to introduce Jason Malloy is our Westland John Glenn Athletic Director, and he will be speaking about the accolades of his student athletes within his building.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It was a great year for both schools, knowing both sides, because I was the Athletic Director at Wayne Memorial at one point. So congratulations to all the teams at Wayne Memorial. Let's give them a round of applause again, too. The first team that I would like to, I would just like them to come down if they're here, our competitive cheer team. If you guys would like to come on down, come on down, come on down to the middle. Led by Coach Brittany and her staff.
No, come down this way.
Come on in the middle. All right, they had a great year. I get to work with Coach Brittany in the capacity that she's our administrative assistant to athletics, so she is phenomenal and does a great job. So just a couple of the highlights that they had this year. If you know anything about cheer, they scored the highest second round in school history, the third round, as well as a record in the, a new overall record of a 739.2, so let's give them a hand for that. They made it to regionals for the first time in 15 years, placed top, placed top 10 at regional competition for the first time in school history. Academic All-State team with a cumulative GPA of a 3.0. Two student athletes on the all-academic, Adriana Lawrence, cumulative 3.87, and Macy Oliver with a cumulative 4.0 GPA. First team All-District, Victoria and Madison. Second team All-District, Haley and Zayanna. Honorable mention All-District Alexis Denaya, and then honorable mention All-Region, Victoria. And then KLA Conference All-Athletes was Victoria, Haley, Haley Dillard, Denaya, and Alexis and Madison Jones. So let's give it up for our competitive cheer program. Next up, I'd like to bring our girls bowling with Coach Kim Cabildo. We do have some great bowling in Wayne Westland, and that's a tribute to both schools, so kudos to Coach Cabildo and the run that she's had. The team finished top eight in the state this year. Since 2012, 14 seasons, the girls have qualified for states, all of them except for two, so they've been qualifiers 12 years. Since 2013, they've had multiple individuals in the states. The girl program owns a division record of 83-0 from 2017, 18 through 22, and 2023 bowling season, and division record of 61-0 from 2012, 13 to 2015 and 16. Tierra finished in the top four in the state this year in the individual, and Janae was a state qualifier as well, so let's give it up for our bowling program. Thank you, Coach Cabildo. All right, next is our boys swim program. Led by Coach Bob Harding. We had our first 7-2 overall record, the best record at John Glenn since we have joined the KLA. Academic highlights, they have a 3.43 team GPA. This year, every individual scored at the KLA conference meet, which is a hard meet with the other side of our division, so kudos to you guys. And then this year, we defeated Belleville and Dearborn High School for the first time since we have joined the KLA. All right, last but not least, our wrestling program led by Bill Polk. Come on down, looks like he's still trying to rally him up. On the wrestling program, one districts, this is 12 in a row for Coach Polk on the wrestling program. I think we said it's like 17, our last 21 or something like that, so kudos. KLA Division Champions, Wayne County Champions, and have five individuals who went to the MHSAA State Championship. Nikala Dawson, MHSAA State Champion, three years in a row, so kudos to her. Landon Johnston, top 12. Jake Kennedy, eighth place. Brooklyn Fisher, top 12. Franklin Hernandez, fifth place. And then our regional qualifiers were Kyron, Trice, Khalil, and Logan. And then this year, we just got this information, we were the top, we were in the top 10 academically with a 3.74 GPA. Like to say thank you to all of our coaches, all that they do in and outside of the classroom and on the playing field. Thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to celebrate our student athletes. Thank you.
Now I'd like to introduce Athletic Director at Wayne Memorial High School, Mark Woodson.
All right, good evening, everyone. I just want to say, first of all, thank you, the board. Thank you, more importantly, you parents, because without you parents and the board, this wouldn't have been possible for our student, young student athletes to achieve the accomplishments that they did this year, this winter season on the basketball court as well as the wrestling match. I'd like to thank you all, as well as I'd like to thank our Principal, Head Principal, Mr. Gettle sleeve, his support and his building leadership. Thank you all. Again, like I say, without you all, this wouldn't have been possible tonight, and you parents. First of all, before I introduce the teams, I do have some individual awards that I would like to mention, some of our student athletes, as well as some of our coaches and the honors that they did receive this year. First, starting off with bowling. Individual, I would like to say Lyman Derrick III. Great job, Lyman, great job, and the best thing about it, he's only a sophomore, and we're looking forward to two more years of great years with you, Lyman, great job. But just as the comments this year, he was named and finished Division One Boys Bowling Single State Champion as a sophomore. Stay up there, Lyman, stay up there. The next two people, I don't think they're here, because I know they are playing spring sports, but the young ladies I would like to introduce is Lupe Salazar. She made it, first young lady to make state competition this year in state championship in individuals, as well as Mariah Simpson. Both of those young ladies made it to the states, first time in school history that we ever had female women, young ladies to make it to the state. For wrestling, yep, for the wrestling, for wrestling. All right, next, I'd like to introduce Lyman's, you can stay up there, Coach. I'd like to introduce his bowling coach, Ms. Christina Day. She was named Visual One Coach of the Year. Great job, Coach. All right, and also in 2023, Coach Day, her team, her men's team was state champion in 2023, so Coach, you're doing an awesome job. Keep up the great work. And the last person I would like to introduce is, and he's not here, because he did send me an email, I guess he got mixed up with the time. I told him it was seven, he said he saw on the school website it was six o'clock with the board meeting, but Dave Cobal. Dave Cobal was named this year Regional Coach of the Year for the girls' wrestling team, and he also was named, nominated for the boys' head wrestling coach team this year. Just a couple of years ago, I think Coach Cobal may have had six, six or five kids on the wrestling team, and now those numbers are close to 60-some wrestlers on the team, so he's doing an amazing job out there. Thank you all for your individual accomplishments. Now I would like to go on to our team. And what I'm going to do is I'll call the teams down, introduce the coaches, if the head coach had come here, I'm going to let the head coach speak a little bit about each one of our, about his team and their accomplishments this year on the basketball court and on the bowling alleys. First, I want to start off with the boys' bowling competition. This year, they made it to the state Final Four Championship, and also, I believe, Coach Christine Day was the championship, y'all won the championship in competitive with the team?
We won the KLA Conference Tournament.
Because it's different, right, yeah, but they won the KLA Conference Tournament this year. This year, but congratulations to them to making it to, making it to the Final Four, and the team that they did lose to in the Final Four wound up winning the state championship this year, so great job, Coach. That's all you needed to say? Do you want to say anything? You good?
Yeah, I just wanted to, well, I, you know, we have one other bowler here. I have one other bowler here. Oh, I'm sorry.
One other?
I just wanted to say that we have two of our bowlers here today. We have Lucian Post, and we also have Lyman Derrick III. Just as he said, Lyman did end up winning the singles tournament, which was a really big deal, and he was the most humble competitor, I just wanted to say. He didn't even realize that he had won, so it was, it was really entertaining for him to come back, and he was like, "Did I, did I win?" So I had to take a second, wait until the other bowler kind of started to, you know, walk up on his last shot to kind of say, "Yup, you did. We're going to wait until he finishes, and then we're going to shake hands, and then we'll continue." It was very sweet. He also made first team All-State, so I wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Coach. Next, I would like to introduce the girls' basketball coaching staff first. They have the head coach, is coached by Jarvis Mitchell. Jeffrey McKenny, Coach McKenny, I think I saw him here. You come on down there, Coach. We're going to get a picture here. Coach, you want to say a few words first, whatever you want to do, then we'll take a picture. Coach Jill Mitchell, I don't think she made it here. She didn't make it. Tekeisha Webster, she's here. And Richard Mesha, Mesha, Coach Richard Mesha, all right, but these are our coaches, girls' basketball coaches. I'm going to let Coach say a few things, and then all the girls' basketball team, if you don't mind, if you could come on down to the floor down here. Yeah, come on down right now. Coach is going to say something about the team. Great job, ladies. All right, Coach is going to say a few things, and then we're going to have all the coaches come down with you all, and then we're going to get a team picture in there.
Thank you, guys. Just want to say thank you to the board for having us and honoring us. This is our fifth Final Four in seven years, I believe, since 2018. The girls absolutely played their butts off this year. We started off the season kind of sluggish, and we lost a couple of games early, and a lot of people wrote us off, but they was able to persevere through it all. I'll go left to right. I got Zoe Hyt, just raise your hand when I call your name. Zoe Hytower, she's a senior. Mackenzie Nelson, she's a senior. Leana Namara, she's a sophomore. Tachiana Allen, I didn't screw that up, yeah. I was nervous about that one. She's a junior. Annabelle Dennis, she's a sophomore. Kaylee King, she's a junior. Mariah Cross, she's a junior. Gabrielle Gerald, she's a senior. Morgan Smith, she's a junior. Micah Darling, she's a junior. And Kalina Bryant, she's a senior. And Jada Bryant, she's a sophomore. That makes up our varsity team. A couple of awards for the girls. Zoe Hytower was All-Conference. Mackenzie Nelson was All-Conference. Mariah Cross, All-Conference. Kalina Bryant was All-Conference. Kalina Bryant was a Miss Basketball finalist, as well as McDonald's All-American nominee, as well as an Adidas All-American, and she'll be continuing her athletic career at Drexel University. Mariah Cross, a junior, she's committed to Temple University. She'll be, you guys can clap if you want to. I don't want to sound like I'm just rambling. But overall, just a great group of kids, had a lot of fun this year, and we look forward to getting back to the Brezlin next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. We're going to get a team picture of you and your team. Great job this year, Coach. Great job this year, Coach.
Coach, if you want to take your team out to the lobby, because it's a bigger group, Ms. Johnson will be able to get a better picture with you guys.
Okay, last but not least, we're going to introduce the boys' basketball team. Come on, fellas, if you want to come on down right quick, all your coaches, come on over, I'm going to introduce the coaches. Our men's, boys' basketball team is coached by none other than Coach Steve Brooks. Come on up, Coach Steve Brooks here. His assistant coach, Ryan Brooks. Todd Richardson. Avery Williams. Stefan Allen. And Courtney Smith. All right, great job. Coach is going to come up and say a few things right now.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the board for also honoring our basketball team. It's been an amazing run. The run, hopefully, is not over, but just want to let the whole board and people who are not around the program know that these are some amazing young men, not just on the basketball court, but throughout the school. We have teachers here that can vouch for that, and you can't do anything without support from all over. We want to thank everyone who really supported us. It was great just seeing everybody, familiar faces at the Breslin. Want to thank my assistant coach, Ryan Brooks. So, here's the deal, all of these guys are my sons. No, really, I just, biological son, met him when he was sixteen. So, that was, how long ago, thirty? He's still having kids, so he's still, so, and, but played for me, and also played for me, and then Courtney Smith, who stepped out, was also played for me. And so, that really helps the program work, because a lot of guys are afraid to talk to the head coach, and so, whatever coach they talk to, they still get the same message. So, that's what happens when you have, you know, people that you coached, actually coached with you, so, great thanks to them. Also, want to give thanks to just all the, all the fans, daughters, wives, principal. So, the two people over there, the Purdue's, I don't care where we were, we could look up in the stands, and they were there. And so, that's, all of that's fantastic, so, we're going to introduce the guys to you. Raise your hand, just as the girls did. Absolutely, and Ms. Bonnie. She was at every game as well. And, and, is Joel here?
No.
Okay, so, also Joel Lloyd, you know, and, and like I say, when you go into gyms that you're not familiar with, it's always great to look up and see support, and so, that was really huge. Okay, junior Carlos Metlock, junior Bam Williams, sophomore. All right, I'm sorry. Bam Campbell, all right, Tamara Campbell, all right, Antoine Williams, that's why I got mixed up. Brandon Quick. We call him Be Quick. Talon Clark, senior. Abraham Rooks, senior. Jeremiah Smith, sophomore. Jaylon Allen, junior. Chase Dyer, we call him Chase Bank. All right, he's a junior. Travell Hawkins, sophomore. And Josh Dennis, senior. Missing today are our captain, Austin Torrey, he's got his last two days of driver's training, so he couldn't miss. Just to say a little bit, a little bit further, we had Josh Dennis, Jaylon Allen, Carlos Metlock, Abraham Rooks, and who else made it? Austin Torrey, they were all KLA, they were all conference. Carlos Metlock and Jaylon Allen were all team, first team All-State, and Carlos Metlock made the Dream Team, both Detroit News and Detroit Free Press. Also, we had Chase Dyer and Travell Hawkins and Jaylon Allen, our KLA All-Academic. So, with that being said, we thank you again for honoring the guys, and, you know, we're excited to get back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, board, for having us here. We appreciate you having us down and recognizing our kids and our coaching staff and so forth. Thank you.
What you going to do now, President? That was very interesting.
Very exciting. Congratulations to all of our student athletes. Next on our agenda, we have employee recognition with Mrs. Polakovic.
Good evening, President May and members of the Board of Education, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to recognize one of our amazing high school administrators tonight. The Human Resources Department will begin recognizing employees at board meetings for their significant contributions and impact on the district. However, Dr. O'Feely is attending the Wayne State Job Fair tonight, so he asked me if I could honor Mr. Jason Malloy, our athletic director at John Glenn High School. So, I'm just going to say a little bit about why I'm honoring him, and a little bit about Mr. Malloy. Mr. Jason Malloy has dedicated his career to serving students and advancing educational athletics. He earned his bachelor's degree in education from Western Michigan University, where he was a four-year starter on the football team. He also holds a master's degree in sports administration from Central Michigan University, and an administrative certification in K-12 education from the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals. For the past five years, he has served in the Wayne Westland Community Schools, first as Athletic Director at Wayne Memorial High School, and now at John Glenn High School. John Glenn Principal, Mr. Kelly, states Jason's strategic vision and ability to inspire both coaches and athletes have been instrumental in the athletic department's success. One of his most significant contributions is his commitment to fostering a positive and inclusive environment for all student athletes. He has implemented numerous initiatives that promote sportsmanship, teamwork, and academic excellence. Jason's influence extends beyond our school district. He currently serves on the MHSAA Representative Council and the MI AAA Board as the Recording Secretary. He is also a member of the MI AAA Diversity and Equity Committee, and has contributed to the MHSAA Public Relations and Awards Committee. A champion for youth development, Jason is the founder and camp director of the Next Level Football Camp, a nonprofit organization that teaches student athletes the fundamentals of the game. He has coached at several schools and universities, including Ypsilanti Lincoln, Ann Arbor Pioneer, Robishad, Corn Cordia University, and Wayne State University. Among his many accomplishments at John Glenn, Jason led the creation of a student fueling station in partnership with the Detroit Lions, established the John Glenn Hall of Fame, securing funding for a new strength and conditioning center, and has actively led fellowship of Christian Athletes Chapters in each of the schools where he served. Jason Malloy is also a member of the Robishad Hall of Fame. He is a devoted husband to Ornella and proud father of three daughters, Ariana, Jada, and Zuri. We are so very proud of Jason being named the Region Eleven Athletic Director of the Year from the Michigan Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. And he's just an all-around good human, too, so, we're very thankful for you, Jay.
Mr. Malloy, would you like to say anything?
I just would like to say thank you. It is a privilege and an honor to serve kids, or students. I always say that this is not a job for me, it's a calling. It truly is. I'm supposed to be right where I'm at, and when you have support from central office, from your principals, from your admin, it is not a job, and I'm just so thankful for the opportunity to be in Wayne Westland to try to make an impact. Sports has done a great deal for me in my life. I always say, the athletic ability helped me get the scholarship, the scholarship helped me get the degree, and degree put me here in front of you right now. And so, I want to try to provide that same opportunity for our student athletes in the position that I am in as athletic director. We talk in our school about win forever, and that's win at the game of life, ultimately, because sports ends for everybody at some point. But as an administrator, as someone who has impact on our young people, what do we give them when they leave? That's great, Coach Brooks, they went to the state final, they are a great team, but what you'll know about Coach Brooks and Coach Brittany and those people who really care is that they're instilling things into their life, and they'll come back for that, they'll ask them to come to their weddings, and when they have babies, those are the lasting impacts that we want to make. So, we're about relationships at John Glenn, but we want to win games, too, right? That's important, that's important to all of us, but I think making better young men and young women is the ultimate goal. So, thank you, guys, as a board, to do this, because there are not many boards that do things like this to celebrate our student athletes and the people who get awards. So, thank you again, you guys are doing an amazing job. Thank you very much.
Next, we have the Meridian Vision Band, Mrs. Amanda Fawnin.
Good evening, and thank you for having me this evening. I'd like to call up some of my friends from Meridian who are here tonight. Patty Graham, Plan President and CEO. Edward Hollis, Community Relations Coordinator. And Maddie Madden, Communications, I'm sorry, Community Relations Coordinator. So, Meridian has been such an amazing partner to our district the last two years. They came in and provided screenings for vision, eyeglass exams, and also free eyeglasses to nine of our town elementary schools. In total, they screened any student who had a return permission slip, and in total, that was 1,298 students received screenings, and 318 of those students received free glasses from those screenings. And I want to convey just how grateful we are, and to do that, I thought it would be great for you to hear some of our student statements on how the glasses impacted them. So, one of our students said, "These glasses may be the best glasses ever. They are nice. They help me with long paragraphs and confusing papers, and also, things I can't see. I feel great. They feel so good. Thank you." They feel great, they really improved my sight, and from sitting in the back of the class, I really couldn't see, so those really helped. I feel wonderful about my glasses. They helped me run faster. I love them. They're helping me read better, and they help me hear better. I feel good about my new glasses. My new glasses help me see better. So, on behalf of all of our students who received our free glasses, I would like to thank Meridian at this time, thank you guys so much. They were wonderful with our students, as you can see. It wasn't just one or two pair of glasses that our students got to pick out of, it was a lot of glasses, and the staff here helped them pick out their glasses and do the little finger tests to make sure they were fitting right, and just made them feel awesome that week that they were here. So, thank you guys so much. And I believe, Patty, you wanted to say a few words?
I just wanted to say that, you know, as, as we think around, I, we have the pleasure of serving the entire lower peninsula with members, and oftentimes, when we look at communities' need or districts' needs, it takes a partner who's really engaged, and you've got an incredible team of teachers, of leaders within the school, Amanda leading, and not only saying yes, but yes, how can we make this work? When you think about the impact that vision can give to a kiddo that, that can't see, it can be life-changing. So, it's not just because of the work we do, but it's also because of the great partnership with, with the district and the leadership that we've got within the, the student body advocating as well. So, just wanted to say thank you for the partnership, and looking forward to continued success and, and partnership together. Thank you.
We're going to get a picture real quick, don't we?
Absolutely. Thank you, Meridian. As someone that wears glasses, I do understand the importance and the difference that they make, so thank you for all that you do. Next on our agenda, we have Item 318.25, Citizens Comments Regarding Agenda Items. Do we have any?
On agenda, and one, it wasn't circle, it was agenda, not. For Bonnie, where you go?
No, Bonnie says nine. Yep. Thank you. Moving along, we have Item 319.25, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support?
Support.
Thank you. Mrs. Heinz, will you please call, bro?
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Ebony Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
And President May?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, 320.25, Board of Ed Committee Reports. We're starting with Mr. Ambrose, with the Finance and Facility Committee Report.
So, Financial Committee Report for April 3, 2025. Meeting was called to order at 5:29 PM with the following attendants, Mr. Andrew Ambrose, Ms. Melody Heinz, Ms. Jennifer Curry, Mr. Scott Toko, Ms. Jewel Claire, Mr. Darrell Beebe, and Ms. Kim Markey. Ms. Lwani Ebony Mitchell was, was excused due to attending the National School Board's Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. The committee heard first from Mr. Beebe about the following. One, and which will be presented tonight, and are here in a few moments for our approval. One, the request for approval of new Chromebooks and carts for the elementary and middle schools. The board is being asked to purchase 1,194 Chromebooks and 14 carts. $106,823.10 would come from Title I funds, and $251,210.70 would be charged to Title II funds. These Chromebooks would be delivered to the district with all the software needed and installed, ready to use on day one. Questions were asked if the government could rescind any of our title funds with, with the news going around about some schools losing federal funding. It was stated by Ms. Claire that our funds are secure, and questions were also asked if these Chromebooks would be released for home use and the length of use before needing to be replaced. Mr. Beebe stated that these Chromebooks will remain at the buildings in order to reduce wear and tear, and are expected to last five years before replacement. Number two, Mr. Beebe is requesting approval to purchase cellular boosters for seven buildings. There are some spots in our buildings where cellular signal is weak or nonexistent. During the recent phone outage, it was difficult at times for staff to communicate using cellphones. A competitive bid process was performed, and four bids were received, with two with two being insufficient for our needs. Mr. Beebe recommends that the board approve MOS for this project at a cost of $315,000, with funds coming from our sinking fund. Questions were raised about the possibility of cost increase due to tariffs, and the committee was assured that the quote would be honored. Mr. Toko said that if the district needs additional boosters, that would be covered under the new bond proposal. Also, if the board approves the funds for the booster upgrades to the seven buildings, work would start within two weeks and start with the buildings that have the most signal issues. The committee then heard from Mr. Scott Toko about assessments the district had performed on a few district-owned properties in Inkster. There is a discrepancy in the property valuation between what the district was presented by appraisers and what the city of Inkster has the property valued at. There is interest in these properties and also the Kettering property in Westland. Mr. Toko will keep the board apprised of any future developments. Ms. Claire then went over the state financial aid report and mentioned the new items for state aid are the Section 41 bilingual and first robotics revenue. Also, there is a section about proposals for next year's funding. We then reviewed the check register and investment report. For the investment report, the district has approximately $56.8 million, which is 1 million more than expected. With interest rates falling, she will be transferring money to a higher interest account. Ms. Curry then shared about having some community engagement opportunities. Also, the district, as of today, now has a district facility dog named Madden. Madden is a golden doodle and will reside between a Hamilton teacher and Ms. Fawnahen. And he will be at Hamilton four days a week in the district office for one day. Ms. Heinz stated that she is working with businesses in the community to support the district, including Schoolcraft College and Wayne County Community College. And the meeting was then adjourned at 6:18.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy and Procedure Committee Report. Dr. Weaver?
The Policy Committee met. And in attendance was Dr. Weaver, Ms. Heinz, and Mr. Rochon, along with many administrators and also Mr. Sutton. Mr. Sutton shared with us that there were a few tweaks that needed to take place with wording to make sure that we have consistency for our disciplinary hearings. So the one policy update concerned behaviors, and we needed to get in alignment with that. Also, we, Ms. Polakovich, talked about the VPAA Visual Performing and Applied Arts Courses at WEA. The graduation requirement she talked about is that the state requires 18 credits, but we at Wayne Westland require 22 credits. And then we're instituting, or the administration is instituting, a grading task force. And also, again, we talked about cellphone usage, which is a hot-button item across our country, and I believe should be a hot-button item for this board. We looked at our operating procedures, interim superintendent comment, board member comments, and we were adjourned at 10:53 AM.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Rochon, the Student Achievement Committee Report.
Yes, we had our first Student Achievement Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 8, at 5:00 PM. In attendance was President May, me, Mr. Rochon, Ms. Abby Mitchell, and Superintendent Jen Curry. We also have Ms. Paul, I'm sorry.
Paulakovich.
Paulakovich, I'm sorry, Ms. Paulakovich. In attendance. We opened the meeting at 5 o'clock. I opened the meeting by emphasizing the Student Achievement Committee and what it all, and what's all involved. More than, I said that it was more than just test scores. I also aimed to lay out a strategic plan for the upcoming year. I'm beginning to talk about the vision and mission and goals for the Student Achievement Committee. The committee reviewed and discussed aligning our personal goals with the distinctive existing vision and mission of the district. Collaboration is key. And measurable goals will be established to track our progress in increasing student performance. We went over curriculum and instruction, went over the curriculum and instruction overview. Miss Polakovich presented, she presented an overview of the high school curriculum, highlighting current resources and interventions. There was a focus on incorporating student voices through engagement initiatives. And a rollout plan for new curriculum updates will be communicated to families. We talked, Ms. Polakovich talked about graduation requirements and courses offerings. The committee discussed modifications to graduation requirements, including potential new science electives and the introduction of more flexible courses offering to cater to students' interests. The goal was to ensure that all students have the access to necessary credits for graduation while enhancing engagement through various course selections. We talked about the grading task force. Discussed the grading task force efforts and to improve grading practices to do better reflecting students' learning. We talked about community engagement. The committee underscored that the importance of communicating these developments with the community and organizing workshops to explain changes and gather feedback. Engaging families and stakeholders with critical, will be critical to our success. In conclusion, I concluded the meeting by stressing the need for clear communication with the community partners, with community partnerships to support our student achievement initiatives. And that was, we ended our meeting at 8:06.
Thank you.
No.
I was saying.
No, no.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I'm looking at another, I'm looking at 8:06 right here. Long meeting, no.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We are next at Item 321.25, Review and Approval of Business Service Finance and Facilities. We have a recommendation from Mrs. Claire.
Yes, I, Ms. Alex, who's at Hiring Event. These are the Chromebooks and carts that were previously discussed. Completely grant-funded. They will arrive already set up so that our staff does not have to spend the time to take them from basics to being able to be used. Title Funds, one and two, no general fund dollars will be spent.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support?
Support.
Support.
Discussion? Yes, Dr. Weaver?
I'm curious as to how many of our students are currently being serviced with laptops. I notice we keep buying them by the thousands. Are we one-on-one yet?
So, part of what we did, we've been having a large sum of carryover in both Titles II and Title IV, year after year. So one of the things that we did, knowing that we don't know what's going to be happening with title funds moving forward, is I transferred about $40,000 between the two funds to all of our Title I buildings. So that's why you see some Title II dollars being spent on this. So I transferred that money into those buildings so that we could purchase technology to make sure that we had enough to support our students until our next bond. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that that's why that money is there and why they're purchasing it. It was kind of intended for them to do that, to support that. But I'll let him talk about the technology piece.
So, as it relates to, getting to the board, as it relates to our one-to-one status at this point in time, for the most part, we are. But I think folks need to understand that our high school students are the ones who carry their Chromebooks home. Our elementary school students and as well as our middle school students, they are kept in the building. So specifically with this order, though, we were very purposeful in regards to the touchscreen computers specifically for elementary school students because they do a lot better with the touchscreens than they do, you know, in terms of the non-touchscreen. So the majority that you will, that we'll see or that are being purchased for elementary are the touchscreen computers. So it's an upgrade from what they have at this current time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. So I know this is for the elementary and the middle school, but you say the high schoolers is the ones that take theirs home?
Yes, yes.
So are we, how good are we at getting them returned when they leave?
You mean in terms of when they're heading to the, to college and whatnot?
When they finish here at our school, in our district. If they leave our district, are we getting our Chromebooks back?
Yes.
Okay. And these Chromebooks stay in the classroom?
The majority.
So the new ones that we are ordering now, are they going on the shelf or they are neat right now?
The ones that we're ordering now, we'll finish up the year with what we have, but we'll replace, once again, specifically the elementary with the touchscreens.
And this a five-year lifetime?
Yes.
Okay, and what we going to do with them after the five years?
After the five years, they're really, at that point, they don't work at all.
But we will have to purchase more in five years?
Well, once again, as we spoke to, we're trying to kind of build a surplus to make sure that we have what the students need.
Okay.
For years to come.
For years to come.
So I do have a follow-up question. I'm just wondering, are students able to check out Chromebooks if they need a Chromebook at home to do an assignment versus just being able to do it at school? So specifically at the middle school level, I'll ask, or upper L?
Definitely, a lot of times, we'll get specific calls from administration to give a student a Chromebook. So let's say the class has their set of Chromebooks, but we'll bring an additional if we have a student who's sick or who's homebound or who has a need or have a special project, special assignments. We had an honors group in history that we supplied Chromebooks for them. So it's somewhat à la carte for those who need them at home, need to work at home with them.
Okay.
But we supply, we do supply them for them.
And then are we ever, are we having conversation about moving in that direction to be one-to-one where students can take the devices home, specifically at the middle school level, since we're already doing it at the high school level?
We, our highest breakage rate is at the middle school level. And so with that, we're trying to find a balance between just sending them home and what happens between the bus ride and all that, coming, bringing them back. But our highest breakage rates were at that middle school level. That's why we went to keeping them within the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
My question is, because they are, you said, keeping them in the building. So they at the desk. So it's not just one student's Chromebook. It's the classrooms.
Yes, it's in a cart within the classroom, and they're distributed to specific students.
Different students.
Depending on if it's elementary where it's.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, you got.
Okay. I mean, but in the middle school, right, too?
Yes.
Or do they have their own assigned one in the middle school?
No, they don't, but when they, you know.
Okay, thank you. Right.
Depending on when you come to class, you would come to the same Chromebook. You know, when you went to history, you'd have.
So when I go to history, I'm going to look for the Chromebook that I use in history?
That's right, yes.
Okay, but then the next class to come in history, John going to look for the Chromebook. Me and John share the same Chromebook.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell, I just wanted to clarify something that Mr. Beebe stated in regards to the high school students as a freshman, they're issued a Chromebook. That Chromebook is issued to them through their four years, and then they have them. So we're not collecting them. They're basically end-of-life at the end. So I just didn't want that to be confused that we're collecting those at the high school level because we're not.
I was just talking about, like, if a student need a district, is he turning in his Chromebook?
In that case, yes, but if they want the full four years here, they would keep their Chromebook.
The same Chromebook.
But if they transferred, went to a different building and so on, we collect them.
That's very nice to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Cox?
No, I didn't have a comment.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So we had a motion, support, discussion. Ms. Heinz?
Real call? Yep.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Seven zero motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation to award contract for cellular boosters. Mrs. Claire?
The contract is, was given to MOS, so we did take bids. Some of them did not include the labor, so we rejected those because there is some work that has to be done for these. They'll be charged to the sinking fund. We're not going to, will not impact the general fund. These will make the building safer because people can actually call out and it will increase the internet capacity in each of these buildings.
Thank you. Motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Discussion? Mr. Cox?
Well, as Dr. Weaver said earlier tonight, with respect to cellphones in the building, I don't know if the whole nation is starting to look at that for the damage it does in terms of student attention, but we certainly have talked about it, and I know the governor's talking about it. So here we are in anticipation of something that might come down the pipe from the state, and we're going to spend $315,000 making our. Now, I've wanted this for years because you can't get a call in and out, but do we want to spend $315,000 to exacerbate our problem?
Well, it's also the internet. You know, it increases the capacity for that.
I can give you an example, Mr. Cox, in regards to when we have, we lose, say we lose power in the building. We have emergency situations that still occur that our internet goes down, our phone lines go down in the building. So the boosters are, and I get, your point is well-taken in regards to what you're doing, in regards to your statement that these could be, the students could be in a situation where they're not even going to be able to have them or use them in some way, shape, or form in the future. But right now, in those buildings, it's unsafe when we do. And we lose power quite a bit in regards to storms. We have a lot of overhead lines that are not the underground lines that we don't lose. Some schools lose it more than others. We've had multiple accidents where they hit a transformer, where those buildings, and I can speak for myself, that we were concerned that we couldn't have, there was no ability to communicate with the outside world when your cellphones are not working in those buildings. So that is, that's definitely an issue within the district at this point, in particular at the buildings we're talking about.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. So this is for seven buildings? Which buildings are those?
Thank you. John Glenn High School, Wayne Memorial High School, Adams Middle School, Franklin Middle School, Stevenson Middle School, William D. Ford, and then Wayne Westland Innovative Academy of the schools.
It wasn't on the list, that's why.
Okay.
So I'm gonna pause this so that we can stay in our process. So at this point, I'm gonna, um, ask Mrs. Heinz to call roll, we've had a motion and discussion, support and discussion.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Beebe, you did talk about, I don't know if it was you or Ms. Claire that mentioned that, or if you read it in the finance committee meetings, that the other schools were coming up in the bond project, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so to answer your question. Thank you. Next, we have the Marshall property update, Mr. Toco?
Yes, thank you. So at the board, at the January twenty-seventh, uh, a Board of Education meeting, the board unanimously, unanimously approved the sale of Marshall, the Marshall property. I am pleased to share that that's, that, uh, purchase agreement was officially executed on April eleventh. While the property sold for five hundred thousand, the total estimated benefit to the district is approximately three point five million dollars due to the elimination of ongoing maintenance costs and the voidance of, uh, future demolition, demolition expenses. And I, I spoke about this before in regards to, we were scheduling that building to be, uh, demoed in the next bond. Now that we sold it and they are going to pay to demo it, we, that we will not be on the hook for three million dollars. So this is a very exciting deal for the, for the district in regards to, uh, um, pulte homes coming in and building homes because we could capture kids in that process too.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Toco?
Thank you. We are now at item three-two-two, point-two-five, review and approval of curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Paula Kevich.
Hello again. Um, the, uh, I know that a couple of the committee reports had talked about, um, the high school credit modifications. So when I took over the executive director of high school, um, position, I've been doing a lot of digging and, um, just kind of listening and, and all of that. So one of the things that, um, I, as I was looking is, um, we have some things in Wayne Westland, um, that, um, don't give our students as much flexibility as we could give, um, that the state has, has allowed our boards to give to our students. So, um, I have a couple of different things that I'm hoping the board will, um, look at modifying of our current graduation, um, credits. I'm not looking to decrease the number of credits, um, at all, just, um, what makes up those twenty-two credits that we are asking our students to earn, um, for graduation. It's like my remote control at home. Oh, there it goes. Um, so the, this is directly from MDE. The MMC or the Michigan Merritt Curriculum, um, gives districts flexibility to develop courses, curriculum, systems to meet the individual needs of students. So, um, the school board has the autonomy to explain and, or give us direction on how our students earn, um, the credits that MDE, um, has said students must, or, um, learn, earn through the Michigan Merritt Curriculum. So, um, that's kind of what, um, I'm here to help us work through today. So, um, I would like to share some changes on our current graduation requirements. Um, the changes are to give our students more flexibility and autonomy in their learning. Um, so there's three areas, one is, uh, just general graduation requirements for all of our students. Um, the second are our VPAA or our visual performing and applied arts classes specifically at our Wayne Westland Innovative Academy and our health science classes at our career tech center, William D. Ford. So I just wanted to give an overview of what MDE has required. Um, so they have required that students take four credits of English, uh, and that they meet proficiency in the state standards. Um, four credits in mathematics, um, three in mathematics, and then one credit can be in math or a math-related course that must be taken in their senior year. We must provide some type of online learning experience at some point in their education. Uh, one credit of physical education, uh, and that's when, one credit in PE and health or proficiency in the health standards and district-approved extracurricular activities can count as a half-credit in physical education. Science, MDE states that students can have proficiency in state, uh, content standards for science, which is three credits, or proficiency in science of two credits and completion of a department-approved formal career technical education course. So that means they would take two set, two credits of science and then if they take a CTE-approved course, that'll count as their li- third year or third credit of science. Uh, proficiency in the state content standards for social studies for three credits. One credit of visual performing and applied arts. And then world language, two credits. Um, and that could be done with formal coursework of two credits in foreign language or world language. And, or it could be one year of a world language and one year of a formal career tech ed class or additional ver- visual performing and applied arts classes. So currently, um, I put our graduation, um, requirements that are up there and I'm going to specifically look at the items that are highlighted in yellow, um, as potential changes that, um, I'm recommending to the board. So we currently have two semesters of biology, I'm looking at science first, two semesters of chemistry and two semesters of physics. I'm recommending to the board, which is in yellow, that we keep two, two semesters of biology, two semesters of bi- chemistry or physics, and then two semesters of an additional science, um, or completion of a career tech ed course, um, and that would be one credit. So I'm gonna flip ahead. It's a little out of order. Um, there were some questions about what science classes do we offer? So, um, I kind of went through and updated what this would look like. Um, biology, one credit, chemistry or physics, one credit, and those are all of our additional science classes. So, for example, if we have a student who's, as a freshman, takes biology, as a sophomore is taking chemistry and they're like, I really like chemistry, I'd like to take AP chemistry. We currently, either they would have to take AP chemistry and physics at the same time in their junior year or wouldn't be able to take AP chemistry until their senior year because we, they have to take physics. So this is just giving our students some flexibility in how they're going to meet those credits. We're not taking and saying less science, but we are saying science unless they take a career tech ed class. We have a student who knows that they want to be an auto mechanic, but, and they're going to William D. Ford as a junior. Instead of saying you have to take this physics class, you can take your auto, um, your auto mecan- your auto tech class and that would count for that science credit if you complete that class. Now it's going back. Okay. Um, three credits of social studies. Um, the only change here is that, um, starting with the class of twenty-twenty-eight, um, we need to offer a half-credit of financial literacy. So, and working with, um, our economics teachers, who, one of them is right here. Um, we are going to implement that half-credit of, um, financial literacy within our econ- economics classes. So that's our current freshmen, so, um, we'll, we'll be continuously working on that to make sure that those students have that covered. Um, this is in place of a separate class, again, trying to keep things flexible for students so they don't have more requirements to take if we can encompass those learning standards within a class we already have. Uh, we currently require students to either take two semesters of French or two semesters of Spanish, or, sorry, two years of French or two years of Spanish, um, which are the two languages we offer. Um, I would, um, ask, which is what the Michigan Merritt Curriculum has, that we would offer, um, two semesters of French one or French two. And, um, I'm sorry, French one or Spanish one. And then students would be able to fulfill that second year of a foreign language with either, uh, their CTE course or they could take additional VPAA classes. So if we have a student who is, um, very interested in art and they want to take extra art classes, they can do that. We have students who are in mu- uh, are in our music program, um, that band class that they take could, um, fulfill that second year of foreign language. Obviously, our counselors will know, um, and talk with kids when they schedule and encourage kids who are college-bound to take those two years of a foreign language because it's something that most colleges are, are asking for, but it gives our students who might not be on that path some more flexibility. Um, instead of us dictating to them what classes they need to take, that they can take some more classes that they're engaged in, um, and hopefully get them across the finish line. The, the next one, uh, we currently require one semester of health and one semester of physical education. Um, I just, um, again, this is from the Michigan Merritt Curriculum, that students would take one semester of health and then they could either take physical education or, um, participate successfully in two seasons of a varsity sport or two seasons of marching band to take that credit. Um, a lot of our student athletes are involved in lots of different things, um, and would like to take other additional classes. So this just, again, gives them a little flexibility, um, of some classes that they can take. All the others, um, are, are pretty much the same. Um, those were the four areas for graduation requirements. And again, um, this just, um, kind of goes through and I give a little explanation, um, for those. For our VPAA courses, we have a limited number of staff at our Innovative Academy and we have an increasing number of students that are there that need to fulfill these, these credits that are required by the state. So we've worked with our, our virtual course provider, Graduation Alliance, to review course offerings and see what other dis- districts are, um, approving and allowing for VPAA. So I've listed the classes there, finance foundations, financial accounting, fun- fundamentals of financial services, digital literacy, web design, um, digital and interactive meeting, uh, media and public speaking. Um, all of our business classes currently here, um, that we have at John Glenn are approved for VPAA. So this would just be approving those, um, Graduation Alliance virtual classes for our WEA students only. Um, just, a lot of our students are taking art online or some things like that and they're just, um, having some, some struggles with that. So we're trying to give that a little bit more flexibility for them. And then, um, lastly, we have, um, three different courses at William D. Ford. Um, medical assisting, health occupations and sports medicine and exercise science that cover all of our hu- health standards that we cover in our health class in our, um, in our comprehensive high schools. So this again, if a student for some reason didn't take health or something happened that they didn't pass health, um, that if they take and unsuccessfully pass, um, one of those three classes at William D. Ford, they would be able to earn their half-credit in health. Um, their, the crosswalk and the standards alignment, um, should be provided in your packet, it's already been done, um, for you. So, um, so those are there and again, this is just to provide some more flexibility for our kids. So, um, my recommendation, um, is that the board approve the new high school credit modifications and the VPAA courses at WEA as presented.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Support?
Thank you, discussion?
Discussion?
I'd only like to say that I, uh, these are excellent changes. Uh, I like the opportunity, the kids, the students that might not have gone to the career tech center now see that there's an opportunity for them. Might introduce them to something, I think it's a great idea. And I took two years of French and, just because Kathy Ribard took French, but I don't know how to speak English.
Mrs. Heinz?
Um, just quick question, um, when it comes to like the sports medicine, um, do you guys like, uh, want companies to offer like internships? Or do they, can they get like credit hours for like experience?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have a work-based learning coordinator at William D. Ford, so they all have to have some type, that's part of our career tech program. So they all have to have some type of work-based learning experience. It could be a job shadow, it could be a conference, like it, it, there's various different things depending, um, on, on the, the class.
Okay.
Yeah.
And thank you for all your hard work.
Oh, no problem, my pleasure.
Any other questions, Mr. Ambrose?
I like the fact that, um, our, on the science side, you are including CTE. Um, a lot of those classes are actually applied, uh, sciences, uh, auto mechanics, heating and cooling, construction, applied physics, um, and mechanics. The one thing I'm a little concerned about though is I'm looking at the three credits for social studies. And I remember growing up, we had to have a half-credit in civics and a half-credit in government. And I think it's important that our kids at least have some foundation in government and, and their role in it. And that was, at least in my school district, was covered in the social studies department.
And they do, the, um, they have one semester of civics, which is right above that yellow, which is our government class.
And we had a, we also had a semester of government. We had to have it, civics was freshman, government was, was our junior year. And we had two separate teachers for that. And, and Mr. Toco's looking at me and he, he knows exactly what I'm talking about. And, and I, I, I think when I, I look and, and talk to my, to my kids, um, they, they struggle with understanding how our system of government works. And so I, I don't know how we fix that.
So, um, th- uh, ju- this is pretty, pretty typical of most high schools. I know when I went to school, the only class that was required was, we had one semester of government. Um, we are, we, this is the first year, um, in kind of three years that we've, we've, we're completing our flip. We used to teach economics and civics as a freshman and then we would teach world history and then US history. And we've now flipped, so your daughter probably had that as a freshman, um, instead of a junior where, uh, where our kids have that now. Um, so our students now take US history as a freshman, world history as, as a sophomore, and then civics and economics as a junior. So I think they might have a little bit more of a, of a stronghold because they're a little bit older, um, and can understand, you know, just have a little bit more life experience and maturity to understand a little bit more about our government and what is, and kind of encompassing in that class.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. So yes, thank you for this, thank you for, um, just taking a look and kind of doing an audit of what we currently offer and providing kids with other opportunities for learning. I think that's how we keep kids engaged, so thank you so much for that work force. And with that being said, we had a motion, we had support, and Mrs. Heinz, will you please call roll?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have three, um, three-two-three, point-two-five, board discussion regarding listening sessions, Mr. Rochon.
Everyone, um, this was something that came up, um, after talking to other school board members, um, statewide, sidebar conversations and attending the, um, the National School Board Conference. A lot of board members, um, in their districts, they would have, uh, community conversations with the board. Um, I appreciate the conversations our superintendent have been having, uh, with the community. And we've been, uh, some of us have been attending those conversations with the community. But I think as a board, we need to, um, um, have those conversations directly with the community, something that we put on. What those will look like is, um, we would possibly, um, hold those conversations within the district, um, different areas within the district that's, um, 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 best fit, that best fits the, um, the, um, community and our parents and students. Uh, we utilize that time to, um, get feedback on what, what, what they think about, uh, what we should be doing, how we should be voting. I feel that we should not be voting, um, or, or making decisions without feedback. With that being said, I just wanted to open up as a discussion. Um, so we'll, we'll have a couple of harder discussions on cell phone policies, things of that nature down the road. But I would love for our community to, uh, first be able to give us feedback on their opinion before we make decisions for the district. So I just want to open up, open this up for a discussion, what do you guys think about having a, um, a community, um, uh, listening session with the board?
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes, I think it's a good idea because a lot of times, um, just getting that feedback is important. Even like with the bond, you know, I've been going, telling people we're, got a bond coming up, but it's no additional cost to the family. So just different things like. So just different things like that, it helps us if we get ahead of things. Because a lot of times we all notice on social media, people that don't come to meetings pretty much tell what's going on. It's not even the truth. So if we can get ahead of it, I think that's a good idea. And to know what the community, you know, is looking for. You know, we have a lot of things going on. We have a new year coming up next year, preparing our kids, you know, what's important. And even as I said before, with the cell phone use, that's going to be a big hot topic, you know, within the community. So and I think it's a good idea. And then they can meet us as board members, you know what I'm saying? Like the community feel comfortable with us. So I think that's a really good idea.
Any other discussion?
So, are you, no, no, okay. So I like this idea as well. Again, I just think it's important, as you said, not only for the transparency, but to receive not only feedback, but to hear ideas, thoughts, concerns from our citizens. I think that's an important piece of this as well. So thank you for lifting this.
No, I'd just like to say, I also think it's a good idea, provided that there's an itinerary of things to discuss. If you go there and say, what do you think? Well, we think you're all a bunch of bums. And, you know, what, about what do we want to talk? So we're certainly dealing with big issues. And as long as we say, you know, we introduce what we want to talk about, I'm all for it. There actually is no way to have that conversation because board members really are precluded from going out and giving their opinion to everything. We're supposed to speak with one voice. The board is one entity made up of different persons, but it's one entity. We're supposed to speak with one voice and really let the president do the talking on our behalf. And so there's kind of that line there. But yeah, a little community involvement before we have some kind of a disaster would be nice.
So one way that was discussed or shared in terms of like doing that type of thing would be similar to how Mrs. Curry offered the community engagement sessions. But each board member would sit at a table to be, to have those conversations. So like you said, if it's a particular topic that we're talking about, then we could have a board member at each table. And the board member then engages with the community at that table. So that would be one way that we could do it. Just, and we can talk about it further, of course, but just an idea.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I just think that it is a good idea, but we also have to look into what we can do as far as policy. Because even when we have someone here at board meeting, we don't engage with them. We listen to them, but we don't engage. So that could be kind of like a little bit touchy.
So the listening session wouldn't be a board meeting. So it's a, we wouldn't have the formal rules.
But you don't want to go back and forth. But so, yes, with an agenda, I think it'd work. I may not be the right person.
Because it's a listening session.
You made me, she did that.
It could turn into a problem.
Yes.
With all the good intentions, it could turn into a good problem.
But yeah, you know, I think with the right agenda and everything and, you know, it can, it can happen, but we just need to look at policy and make sure this is what we doing and, you know, every board member don't need to be there.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Mr. Rochon?
One thing I want to add, after talking to other board members of other districts and how they did it, to kind of, the setup could sort of be like a speed dating setup where we have a board member at each table. And it's a timed conversation. The first conversation can be about student achievement, about the budget, about cell phones. And we'll time that maybe fifteen, twenty minutes to have that discussion. And then you rotate to each table. So it's not one big conversation, but smaller conversations with individual board members at each table. So I think we could probably manage it and work that out. I don't want this to just be a discussion for right now. So I'll email you this in detail, some ideas, so we can put this on the calendar and really get this done as soon as possible.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I see you thinking, Mr. Pax.
Well, yeah, I do have concerns. I have concerns because, you know, when people look at the Board of Education and the head administrator, the superintendent, they kind of relate it to like it's a board of directors and the president running the company. But that's not how this is set up at all. The idea that individual board members would be sending emails to the superintendent, I demand this, I demand this. You have no basis with which to demand anything. I know members of boards of education believe that that is their role, but in fact, it is not. The board should be speaking with one voice. For instance, if somebody wants something, that's got to go through the president and then to the superintendent. And by the same token, when you get involved in this kind of a thing, and let's say you're doing the speed dating, I don't know what information, it's almost like it's a, like it's a campaign event. Because the board really doesn't speak for the school district. We have a communication director that speaks for the school district. So if someone comes up and says, my child gets picked up at this bus stop and that's never working for us for this reason, I would like our child to have this. There's not, nobody here can say anything about that. We don't know. They're going to look at us at having answers to things that are administrative related because that's what they interact with. What we said is policy. And we hire and oversee the superintendent. So if we're having conversations about that, that is our area of expertise. Whereas this kind of a thing would almost, if anybody speak up, tell me if they think I'm wrong about this, this is going to be a time for people to interact with us as if we're administrative people. We're, we set and we don't. So we're going to say, well, gee, we don't handle that. You got to call this person. I'm just saying, improving communication between the community, especially like Melody says, when we have financial issues coming up that need to be described, that's a great idea. That's why I say an agenda. But this kind of thing could go off the rails quick because we don't, we really don't know the answers to a lot of the questions we're going to get. It's not going to make us look smart. It's not even our role.
Yes, Melody, I'm sorry. Heinz?
Yes. So I'd like to say, for instance, one day I went to the gas station in Wayne and I had my Wayne Westland shirt on. And I had a parent come up to me. They had a situation. And I immediately got rid to the superintendent because I tell them, hey, you know, I'm going to get it to the right advisor. So because a lot of people are like, oh, my gosh, and it was something, you know, really big. And it was just nice to be able to, you know, get that parent to feel good to know, hey, you know, I can't, I'm the board member. That's not my place, but I'm going to get you to the right people. So. And I pretty much do that a lot in the community. I have people calling my personal phone. I don't mind that. It's like, oh, this is going on. Hey, that's out of my lane, but let me get you to the superintendent. And then they'll get you to the right thing. Because even it was a situation where something was going on at a school. And I was like, hmm, let me call Jen real quick. And I'm glad I called her because she was like, hey, we need to get ahold of the principal. We was able to squash it really fast before it turned into a problem. So sometimes it is good to be that ear because just me wearing that Wayne Westland gear, she's like, oh, you're in the school board, you know. So it was pretty good.
So I want to clarify what you were saying. You weren't saying you were going to email Mrs. Curry. You were saying you were going to email me, right?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that.
But with that, the beautiful thing about a community conversation is we can lay the ground rules. We can let the community know, hey, we're not here to do this. This is our role. This is our boundaries. This is what we can do. We can forward it to, you know, the right people. So if we let the community know our roles, a lot of times the community don't know, understand our roles. That's one thing that could come out of this community conversation.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Weaver?
I'm torn on this because the politically correct thing to do or the thing that sounds the best is involve the community, involve this person or that person. But I want to point out the other side of the coin is that our community has elected us to make the tough calls. It's not that they're going to be disappointed in them and it's not that they're going to like everyone. But they have elected us to look at everything that comes down from our superintendent, to take a close look at it, to study it, and to make what we feel like is the best decision. Again, the thing that sounds the best is let's open it up and involve everyone. I'm not sure that that's the way to go.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And I just want to say, I agree, I agree with both of them. Because if we think about our role as board members, it's nothing in the role that, that gives us, where we go out and have community conversations. You know, like Fred just said, we are elected and they trust us. When somebody approached me out in the community, you know, I refer them to the secretary or I even tell them, come to board meeting and put it on record because I cannot make anything happen. If I go tell the story, they going to think I'm making it up. So I need you to tell your story. And I support them that way. But we can get seriously caught up in a whole lot of situations. I, 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 I don't know. I just, I know personally, my mouth is too big for it. So. And I can only speak for myself. But we are, as he said, we, our voice go through our president. When we need something, we go through the president. If somebody called me and they needed something, I will refer them to the president. Then she can refer them to the superintendent or I'm always referring them, call our secretary, you know. So that, and to just have all of us out there talking to people. Even when our superintendent had community conversations, we was talking, you know, with her. Even, even when we sat at separate tables and the families was telling us their situation and whatever, we went and got the superintendent or shared it with the superintendent immediately. We did not even need the building with the information. We made sure that the superintendent had the information because that's who we're handling with. So it's just something to think about, something to talk about right now. Our schedule is completely full. Have y'all got your calendars today?
Anyone, yes, Mrs. Heinz?
I just have one last thing. So I'm a part of a lot of different organizations like the NAACP. Then I'm on the executive board of the 12th Congressional District. And what I do a lot of times, because they have like that elected official, they go just talk for like three minutes. So I'll just bring the actual like, you know, agenda. That way I'm staying on topic, a couple of highlights. They give me like three minutes. And then that way, even like the city council meeting, I went the other day, let them know, hey, we got this going on in the district. I had like fifteen flyers I did in like three minutes. But so that way it's like, it's, you know, to the point where what happened after me, like a quick recap to the community. And then that way we're not getting out of order and zones and stuff like that to kind of let them know what's going on.
Yes.
On the surface, I like the idea, hearing, hearing from parents, all the stakeholders. I would like to see if any board in the area does it. And maybe attend one of their sessions before I would be in full support or not. Because, because of some of the concerns that have been raised, I just want to see the process in action before I would actually. I think it's a great idea, but I want to see how other districts have implemented it first. And I don't know if anyone here knows of a district that had, in the area that's done that.
Do, anybody? No?
All right. So if there is no other discussion, I'm not familiar with one, so that's why I didn't answer your question in this area. But if there are not, if there is not or are not any other discussion points, well, table lists are endless. But thank you, Mr. Rochon, for lifting it. Thank you, everyone, for engaging in the conversation. I think that's important for us to have is the healthy dialogue, to hear the ideas of other board members to make us a better board. We're now at three two four point two five, citizens comments, non-agenda items.
I just like to make sure, do we have everyone who wanted to say something, information up here? Thank you so much. Okay, so we have, let's see, April Astrander for non-agenda items, three minutes.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, April.
Hi. I just wanted to just talk for a few minutes. I've worked in the district for nine years now. I'm also a proud graduate of John Glenn High School. The district means a great deal to me. I take pride not only in the schools, but the incredible staff that I work with alongside every day. That's why I'm concerned that we haven't yet confirmed which direction that we are heading with Ms. Curry. Will she continue as our superintendent? At the last meeting, it was discussed, but it was not confirmed to my knowledge. I didn't speak last week or last month, and I wish I would have. Our staff, our students, and community have been through a lot this year. We are finally able to breathe again, and we are now questioning what's next. In the past, the district has conducted superintendent searches. And unfortunately, those hires ultimately did not meet the district's needs. In both cases, we ended up paying for two superintendents at one time, which placed the district in unnecessary strain on the funds that could have gone directly to support our students. The cost of another surge and the risk of repeating history should give us pause. Ms. Curry has been dedicated to this district for over twenty years. She embodies the quality that the board, that they wanted in a superintendent. Someone who has been collaborative, transparent, and truly listening. The district feels calm and focused, and we appear to be moving in a direction that reflects the priorities of our community. Ms. Curry has constantly gone above and beyond to meet the needs of the board and the community. And I believe now is the time for the board to do the same for her. Bringing in somebody new would likely mean a shift in leadership style and priorities. Ms. Curry has already been leading us down a path that both the board and the community have asked for. Let's not lose our direction.
Thank you.
Next, it looks like I have a Steve Kahn for non-agenda items.
Good evening. Steve Kahn, the president of the Wayne Westland Education Association. First, I want to thank you guys for being on the board. I appreciate the discussions that you guys have. Throughout the state, a lot of school boards are just out of control. And it's putting their districts in liability. I can give you examples later. So the fact that you're having these discussions and working together and trying to work together is good for our district. Also want to give a shout out to our Perpros, how hard they have been working for minimal pay and ridiculous hours in the conditions that they do. They make our teachers' jobs a heck of a lot easier. So I want to give them a shout out as well. And also to the Stahlmeier group that was here earlier. We, as you know, we just negotiated our contract, excuse me, losing my voice. I don't know why I'm not teaching anymore, but you know, getting yelled at, too many calls. We moved all the teachers there from an hourly pay scale into the full teacher contract so that they are now salaried. And I know we're only talking about thirteen individuals, but it is life, it's life-changing for them, okay? But we're one of the first in the state, I think we're the first, we're still trying to do the research, the first in the state to move the preschool program. They all have their degrees. And the kids that start there, they stay in Wayne Westland. And what you saw today was just a little bit of what they do, okay? Literally life-altering for that group. Also, I want to say, in general, obviously, this is a phenomenal district. Everything we saw here tonight, all the presentations and all that. And all that starts from the leadership, from the superintendent's office. Jen Curry has brought stability to our district that we haven't had in a very long time. The fact that you haven't hired her yet makes me kind of upset, makes our employees upset. April was pretty nice about it, but that's the feeling, okay? We finally want stability. Yes, you were elected. The union groups want stability. This is the first time in Wayne Westland history that the MEA supports your superintendent and wants you to keep the superintendent. Think about that. The first times, I don't know, maybe the sixties, I don't want to go back how long Wayne Westland's been around. But for at least fifty years, this is the first time that all union groups support our interim superintendent and want you to make her full-time. Where else are you going to have an on-the-job interview for over a year? You're never going to get that. This is a rare opportunity for us, and I feel like you guys are blowing it. But I do appreciate you. I love you. So. And so I just, I just want to let you guys know that we're on the cusp, but we are changing things. We're moving in the right direction. And it's because you have someone who never wanted to be a superintendent that has fallen into this position. And she's taken up the helm. She's working more hours with the same pay than she ever has. And we appreciate her as a union. And I hope that you take what I have to say on behalf of all MEA groups in Wayne Westland. And, uh, we appreciate her as a union, and I hope that you take what I have to say on behalf of all M E A groups in Wayne Westland into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have an Anne, is it Heinecke, about community meeting roundtables?
I am Anne Heinecke. I'm a community member, and I'm a para pro in the district for twenty-seven years. Um, talking about the, the community forums like you would, I love that idea. Um, we, I sat in on Ms. Curry's forums, great. Um, uh, let's see here, I'm reading, um, um, if, I think that the, the groups, Sue, come help me with this. Um, the groups, I think you need to hear what the community has to offer too. And, and with your groups, have a set table for this, have a set table for this. Don't go off of topic. Keep that topic. I really like that idea. Um, if you don't, you won't know what community members are interested in. I get both sides, I understand it. And that's what I have for that. And my second thing is Friday night, the uncorked and tap. What a great evening. Maria, nice job. I, Sue and I had the chance of serving wine, and we had the greatest time. So if you weren't there, you missed out.
I was there.
I know you were.
Thank you.
And next we have a Ms. Bonnie, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right, is it Parnido?
Perundo.
Perundo.
Oh, boy. Hi, I am Bonnie Perundo, a paraprofessional at Stevenson Middle School. Um, y'all should have a salary paper that I sent to you. Um, I'm here on behalf of WAP. I hope I'm not too late for this. Uh, I would like to bring attention to our pay compared to other groups in the district. As a WAP group, our jobs are mentally draining, physically demanding, and sometimes both. We get injured in many different ways, such as being kicked, bit, hit, things thrown at us. And we also hurt our back, shoulders, et cetera, for moving, moving students around that are in wheelchairs. However, we show up every day after day and love our students. They too love us back. We take care of them as if they were our own. We are second in line for education for our district. If we are a parent agenda in classroom, we help more students than just our own and are very happy to do so. By the end of the first semester, if not sooner, we have many students who sit by us or come to us and, and ask for help. Our own students as well as others know they can trust us and that we will look out for them. We are not just that other adult in the classroom. We are helping to ensure students are ready for their futures. Please help us help them. We are always short people. We currently have around forty-five open positions. Even after using one to two agencies, our positions are still not filled. We then try to help out in other special needs classrooms in our buildings that are short paras. We try to make the day run smoother for all in our building. In the past several years, we rarely get subs, so they, then again, those who are there that day are lending a helping hand whenever they can possibly can. This can be very draining as we try to be in two places at once or do the job of two people. Our teachers love us. I have had some say to me, I wish you could be in my classroom during a certain hour. I am sure that I am not the only pair who has heard this. Some even call us teachers. They are amazed and say it's crazy that we only make as much as we do. They feel that we are great, a great asset in their rooms. All in our group have to be highly qualified, which means having at least sixty credit hours or paying for a test that is extremely hard to pass. Some do fail, and each time the cost is forty-five dollars. I am not here to have any other group in the district feel as if we do not appreciate them, but the other groups that I would like to compare our salaries with do not need any additional schooling beyond high school, and they do not have to pay for any testing. These groups start at least twenty thirteen and end at twenty seven eighty-three. The starting fa- pay for the WAP union is eighteen ninety. As you can see, our group is the lowest paid in the district, except for bus aides. At one point, I mentioned that I would like to have the WAP group make as much, at least as the grade six secretaries. They are the ones that are in our buildings, and I was told that that would never happen. I cannot grasp this concept. We have been in the bottom forever. Please help us rise to the top. We are a special group of people who go, give our love and a dedication to the students of this district. I hope the district has listened closely and will take into consideration what I have said here tonight and pay us what we are truly worth. Come spend a day in our buildings and you will see.
Thank you.
And that's the last of our, um. Thank you so much, Mrs. Heinz. Next we, um, have three, we're at item three two five point two five interim superintendent's comments.
Great, thank you, Ms. May. Um, last week, our central office team and building administrators engaged in a professional development session centered around artificial intelligence, known as A I. Together, we explored how A I tools can simplify everyday tasks, support data-driven decision-making, and discuss best practices for using A I responsibly in education. Next steps, we will plan to create a district A I task force to help foster a learning environment where A I empowers and enriches opportunities for every student. Thank you, as mentioned previously, to everyone who attended the Wayne Westland Education Foundation event last Friday. It was truly a success. I know even my husband had a great time as we were serving wine, I think at the table next to you. Um, it was a wonderful evening filled with community spirit and support for our schools. The funds raised will directly benefit our classrooms and programs across the district. And lastly, our annual culture and diversity festival will be held at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center on Thursday, May first, from five to seven. Please join us for the celebration, which will feature international cuisine, cultural performances, student showcases, and valuable parent and family resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we are at item three si- three two six point two five, review of recommendations, Board of Education. We'll start with Mrs. Heinz tonight.
Yes, thank you for everyone who attended. I'd like to say congratulations to our wonderful sports teams. It's really exciting this year. Um, I also like to give a thanks to, um, Mayor Kevin Coleman. Um, he donated five hundred dollars to our key club over at John Glenn High School. I'm the president of the Wayne Westland and Surrounding Areas Kiwanis Club, and we focus on literacy. And with our students at John Glenn High School, they do a lot of community service projects, so I was really excited. Um, some of the issues we were having with our club is the kids didn't have money for the membership. Sometimes it's like seventeen to twenty-five dollars. So to be able to avoid that situation, we were trying to raise money to help the kids be able to pay for the membership. So the mayor of Weston gave us five hundred dollars. I'd like to thank the, uh, Westland Police Department Officer Kaylee Copie. Um, they gave us two hundred dollars for the key club at John Glenn High School. I'd like to thank the Kiwanis Club of Colonial Plymouth. They gave us five hundred dollars for the Kiwanis Club, uh, for the key club at John Glenn High School. Uh, we were able to raise a hundred and eighty dollars. We had a book, uh, sale at the Westland Library, cause they're one of our strategic partners. I'd like to thank everyone that helped our kids with that. And hopefully, once I get the key club at, um, John Glenn established, I want to definitely go over to Wayne Memorial. Uh, but we will need a new service advisor for the key club at John Glenn High School. So if any staff members are, um, want to do that, definitely let me know. Uh, but we are, you know, really raising the money to get that club going. Um, also, uh, we do meet, um, at the Westland Library on the second Tuesday of the month at twelve o'clock, and on the fourth Tuesday of the month at the Westland Library for the Kiwanis Club. Um, I'd definitely like to, um, congratulate again the wrestling team for doing a good job. Um, I sit on the Wayne County Women's Commission, and we had a resource fair at School Cap College, uh, Monday. We had over sixty-four companies participate. So, uh, being on that committee, I definitely want to get them over to the Wayne Westland School, so different companies that's hiring, so we can add to different companies for our students, and we have our fair. And, um, I want to definitely get some more tours going over to the Career Technical Center, cause we have a lot to offer, you know, and a lot of people don't know what we do over there. Um, I'm super excited. We've been working closely with, uh, Michigan Works, and there's actually some job fairs coming up, and I definitely want to work, uh, with some of the staff to see if we can get these flyers out in the peach jar. But there is a community job fair tom- on April fifteenth, um, from twelve to three P M at the thirty-fourth District Court, one 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 two nine Wayne, Michigan. Um, there's also another job fair, a spring career fair, um, April the thirtieth in South Gate at one five one zero zero Northline Road. And the numbers, if you're wanna, you know, get this information, cause a lot of people are losing jobs, and these are, you know, pretty good paying jobs. Um, the number is seven three four, uh, three six two three four eight five. Um, and I definitely would like to let people know about the, um, Marshmallow Drop they're having at Hype. It's gonna be, uh, Friday the eighteenth. It's totally free to the community. Um, starting at ten thirty at the Hype in Wayne is gonna be at that park, uh, over near Franklin. Um, and then two, we're actually having a free networking event with the Wayne Chamber of Commerce at La Rosa on, um, April the twelfth, from five thirty to six thirty P M. It's over at Brook East on Michigan Avenue. And what we've been doing, so I got a partnership with the Michigan Small Business Development Center, and we were able to do free small business classes for the people in the community over at the Wayne Library. So the first one, we had at least about thirty people show up. The second one, the L L C class, we had a ton of people. So this is something that's nice, when you don't have to be an adult. I went to the high schools and passed it out as well. So you could be a, you know, a young kid, you know, want to start your own business, but this is really helpful in the community. And, um, again, we had a great time with the uncorked event. Um, again, I look forward to that every year. And we also, the Wayne Rotary is having an event May the fourteenth from five to seven P M at Jefferson Burns, and it's a jubilee with the Rotary. So definitely, you know, I like when different nonprofits and organizations come together to help our students. And I think, oh, one more thing too. So, um, this has a board member, just a quick reflection. A quick reflection I would like to talk about is, you know, being on the board for over eleven years. And when I first joined the board, I was, uh, coming right after, uh, Greg Berisi, who's been our superintendent for seventeen years. And we had Dr. Harmla, and then we have other superintendents as well. And just being on the board, this amount of time, we've went through a lot of superintendents and doing the searches and, you know, when people interview, we get one thing, but in the end, something else happens. And what I'm concerned about is going through so many superintendents as a district is not a good look in the public when we're on the news again, like Wayne Westland can't keep superintendents. And then, you know, the fact of who wants to come to our district if we just keep going through superintendents? We had a lot of bad publicity, and we're just now trying to stabilize. Um, I'm like in full support of keeping, um, Jen as our superintendent. She's been doing the work, you know, the school year's almost over with. The community has said that they want to keep her, the staff, the students, and we're just in the right direction. So I don't want to cause any upheaval that could be a problem, cause if we have no superintendent, you know, cause she could leave, it can happen. I've seen lots of principals that left the district and their superintendents in other areas. So definitely, you know, I am concerned about that, not having anybody and this be forced, forced search, it can happen. So again, I support you, Jen. You've been doing a good job. You've been here over twenty-something years. You've been through all the superintendents, and overall, the bones are buried. And like I said, she just has my full support as a board, and this is gonna be a thousand percent, and she just has my support.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver.
Uh, once again, we've come to a monthly board meeting. Once again, I will state that the policy committee, for many months now, has had policy changes in queue. And, uh, the policy committee has not been recognized, uh, to move forward with these changes. One of the main things we do as a Board of Education is to consider policy. So, uh, when we think about the policy committee, obviously, nothing happens until this whole board votes on it. But this whole board cannot vote on it if it's never put on the agenda. All other comments I'll reserve until future events dictate. Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you, President May. This evening, we were, uh, treated to a wonderful presentation. Student after student after student's performance, and that was not an accident. Uh, years ago, the, we had a conversation about kids just do better when they're involved with their school building, whether it's extracurricular sports or activities, uh, they just do better. And we were trying to create an environment in our school district where the students are at the school buildings, not just during school hours, but for a variety of extracurricular activities. The idea of bringing in quality, uh, athletic staff and coaches and what have you, it's a move that was criticized, but it was done just so that we would have the kind of evenings that we had tonight. And you, you heard the coach talk about the individual student athletes. It wasn't just about athletics. As a matter of fact, that was secondary. What, did you see the team, the teamwork, the teamsmanship, them putting their arms around their coaches? That's what it's all about. And it didn't happen by accident. Those people are doing a tremendous amount of work, and they're good people. And they weren't cheap. We put them there because the kids deserve that kind of attention. I was so happy to see it. Along the same lines, you know, we have for finances, we have, uh, a tool. I know everyone got today their benchmark report. Uh, I looked at it before I came to the meeting. I would like to have a student performance report too. I would like to know, just as easily as we can look at our finances and benchmark, what the different school buildings are doing. It was mentioned earlier that there was a sc- couple of, uh, elementary schools that were outperforming the others, and the question was, well, what are they doing differently? Let's find that out. Let's find out what every single building, what the student performance is. We can't make decisions based upon student performance if we don't have an ongoing relationship with exactly what it is. So I, I would, I would like to see that. I, I'd also like to know, we had a relationship with the Wayne County Community College District for several years, where we were working in close, uh, contact with, uh, the chancellor on a variety of issues, and that's, that's fallen by the wayside. I'd like to know why did it, and what can we do to get it back on track? And I'm asking this question because I've been called by, uh, Wayne County Community College District trustees, who would like to know what we can do to put our relationship back together. It's important for the college, and I think it's important for our kids too. We've got a lot of opportunities from that. Uh, I don't know who it was, Ms. Heinz, mentioned about, uh, how many superintendents we've had, and I thought to myself, I've personally been involved with, uh, eight of them. And of course, the school district was here for years and years before I got here. And tonight, we heard that the M E A has never approved of one person. And all of those people. I don't know. That, that might say more about the M E A than it says about, uh, the superintendent. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rashawn?
Um, I'd like to, um, start by just recognizing the staff and teachers and the students on a great job that they're doing, you guys are doing. Um, to see the students, uh, student athletes and just the students be recognized today. Uh, in particular, to start with Carl, um, Stollmeyer is one of the, the schools that really have my heart. And, uh, visiting Stollmeyer and, uh, seeing the kids and, um, I, 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 that's one of my favorite schools in the district, I'm sorry. Uh, with that being said, uh, it was just good to see him and to see him, uh, recognized for his art award. Um, then going on to the student athletes, uh, from the wrestling team to the, uh, swim teams, to the, uh, bowling team. Um, recently, the other day, I, I, I went bowling, haven't been in years. And I thought about the bowling teams. I knew how good we had, how good our bowling team was. I was like, I want to s- I want, I want to sit down with the coaches and the staff and the, the team to, uh, maybe put a program together. We can, you know, bowl with them. Uh, that wa- that was something came to mind, but, um, just recognizing the bowling team, the basketball team. As, uh, they said, as, um, was, that, as was said earlier, uh, we don't know if, uh, was, if there was a final four, uh, boys and, uh, girls at the same time in the district. That's something that should really be highlighted, and, uh, we shouldn't take that lightly. Um, our student achievement in, uh, sports, things of that nature in the district. Uh, with that being said, I, I, um, this past, uh, week, um, we've, I was able to attend a National School Board Association Conference. Um, very, very informative, um, as a new school board member. Um, you, you have ideas and things you want to bring to the district, but to be able to talk to other school board members and get ideas from them and things that they're doing, I think it's invaluable information. Um, a couple of things that, that come to my, I kind of wrote it down, was, um, as a board, making sure that we have a board vision. Um, I know we have a lot of different ideas, but making sure that we establish our board vision, so we can always, uh, make the main thing the main thing, which is our students. Um, I want to make sure that we have more conversations about that. Um, now, a couple of other things that was brought up, um, um, during the conference was Now, a couple of other things that was brought up during the conference was community partnerships emerged as a critical theme. Collaborating with local organizations and families can enhance our educational environment by actively engaging parents and community members. You, you'll hear me say that often. I've always been active in my community. That's the reason why I ran for the board, because I wanted to be even more active in our community. That is the heartbeat of, of me serve, the reason why I'm serving, is to get the community involved, get the partnerships within the community involved in our school system to help our student achievement. Another thing that was brought to attention, and I've always said this as well, we're doing so well in so many different areas. I want to make sure our communication is, is stellar with our community, with our partners, with our community partners, with our parents. Focusing on our district marketing is essential. In education, we tend to think we don't have to, you know, marketing is second, you know, a secondhand thing. But we have to get the word on how the great programs that we're doing, the great things we're doing in the district, to attract more students, to retain the students that we have. Couple of other things that I'll be short. I also want to highlight the importance in elevating student voices. We're all here, and we're doing our best for our students. But I would love to have a student within the district sitting right next to me as a student board member, having them involved in some of the processes we have. Going to the national conference, I realized that there is a National School Board Student Association. I might have got the words mixed up, but it's a national organization where students are part of the Board of Education in their district. I think we should really look into implementing that soon. Not just the one stellar student in the whole district, but I would love to see some students that come before the disciplinary community. They may have some issues within the year, but to hear their voice as well and allow them to represent their school in the district. So we can talk more about that, highlighting more student voices on this board. Also, there are a lot of conversations that I would love to have with the board. A lot of times, we're, we're in session, we have to stick to the agenda. But there are things and nuances that we don't have a time to really discuss. Going to the conference, I was able to have conversations with Fred and, and President May and Luana. And just to have those kind of, those conversations was great, one-on-one conversations. I would love, President, if we could possibly look into a board, more board workshops, possibly a short board retreat where we can just get to know each other a little bit more. I'm a new, I'm a newbie on the board. So I'm coming from a newer aspect, a newer voice, and that's something that I would love to see, is for us to talk a little bit more, feel a little more personable, personal, and have that time aside for the, a possible board retreat. Another thing, and I can go on and on, but we only have, I don't want to belabor the time. I feel like I sound like a preacher. With that being said, I would love to establish something like a parent, a district-wide parent committee. A lot of times, I keep saying, I want to hear from the community and get the community involved. I know we have PTA clubs in different schools. But if we can pull from all of those PTA clubs and create some type of parent committee, and board members could sit on that committee, and we can figure out who would head that committee and what that committee looks like, just to make sure that parents are involved, not just in their local school, in their local elementary where their student, where their child belongs, but they can see a broader view of the district where they can commit to, yes, my, my son attends Stottermeyer, but I look forward to him attending Wayne Memorial, John Glenn in the future, or one of our high schools in the future, just so they can have that broad view. And bringing our parents together district-wide, not just in the local school. So I would love to raise that. And I'll send more of these ideas via email so we can bring those into fruition. In conclusion, being at the conference, I gained a lot of insight in the, how it's necessary for us to build bridges with our community members, with our staff amongst each other. And I just wanted to say I'm committed to work with all of you all and collaborate with ideas. I'm open to criticism. I'm open to opposing views. I welcome it, and I thank you all. That's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Abney Mitchell.
Yes. Good evening. This has been the most exciting, entertaining board member I've ever been to since I've been here. I don't even mind that it's 9:20. Having those students in here was the delight of my heart. And I am just thankful for them, but I'm thankful for the coaches, the parents. Absolutely, the parents. Most of those kids don't drive, so they have to be driven there. Someone has to sit there and cheer them on. So I'm thankful for the parents, the coaches, and the students. But, but the little preschooler just broke my heart. Just stole it away. I wanted to get up and go dance with him and everything. President say, sit down, sit down. She wouldn't even let me move. She knew I was going, sit down, sit down. But I'm, I'm thankful for her to keep me grounded. I'm actually thankful for all my board members because I like to find humor, and sometimes I'm not supposed to laugh. But she is just sitting over there. She messing with me all night long. She can't sit there no more. So, and I'm just thankful for that. It was very entertaining to see them. Thankful for the coaches, the staff, and, and to matter, the eyeglass place. Meridian, the eyeglass place. So they said that they service the elementary schools, and over 1,000 kids got glasses. No, they serviced over 1,000 kids, and over 300 got glasses. Well, I swear, all three of them must go to, 300 must go to David Hicks. Because after they came to David Hicks, every other student had glasses. Everybody, it was a thing going around. They got them Hicks glasses. So the 300 kids must have came from David Hicks. Had to. And I'm just thankful to them, and y'all know I can't keep secrets. I see Amanda, what happened to the facility dog?
He is at home in the crate.
He's at home. You told me he was going to be at board meeting. So I do have a question for the community. So we have a new facility dog, very pretty and everything. But he's going to be housed at Hammerton four days a week, right? Oh, I'm not supposed to be talking to, oh, I can't talk to you? I told you they keep me in order. But you, can you tell us why the community, why, you can't tell me? Never mind.
Talk to her afterwards.
Oh, my God. Read your board operation book. But thank you, Amanda. If you would have moved a little faster, you could have answered. You didn't even have to get up. The question could have been answered. But thank you so very much for everybody. And I had the pleasure to go to the National School Board Association in Atlanta. Oh, my God, to see all, meet all, and engage with the board members from all over the world with my little Insta name tag. I'm like, I'm from Insta, I'm from Insta. Supporting Insta, you know, they not familiar with Insta, so I was Insta proud. So, but I met board members and superintendents, and I can't think of the name of the school, but he has 500 students. And I was like, and you got seven board members? I need to be on that board. That's easy peasy. But we met people from the school boards that had 22,000 from 500 to 22,000. And I did not know that New York has over 18 students in their schools. I'm sorry. He looking at me. Don't look at me when I talk. New York has over 800,000 students. And California has over 600,000 students. And it was just a treat to be there. I learned, the classes that I interacted in was superintendent search and transition, the importance of being a board, wait a minute, the importance of board and superintendent's communication, enhancing school safety and security. And, you know, it was just a pleasure to be able to go, money well spent. And, and I'm, I'm just, I just got to tell you, I'm just thankful, you guys. I don't know if I can say it, and the school is Holy Week, and I'm thankful to the Lord for Easter Sunday and Good Friday coming. And thank you so very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrose.
Out of respect to the time, I'm just going to say, first of all, thank, thank you, Ms. Polachevics, for your hard work and your staff on the curriculum. My social media feed was blowing up when the state was coming out with these standards about what's it going to do to this program? What's it going to do to that program? And I am grateful that the time was taken to, so our students can have a well-rounded education. There are some things I'd like to, to see added, talking with, with some teachers. And I will bring that up with, with the appropriate members of the board. But it was a well-thought-out process for how kids are, can get the credits they need to be able to graduate. It's been interesting. School year's winding down to an end, and I have a, have an 18-year-old daughter who now has contracted senioritis. My advice. I'll go back over 30 years ago. I was a young man in California. I was away from my family for two years, serving a mission for my church. And we called it getting trunky. You were living out of your suitcase, getting ready to go home when you had about two months left. And we, there was a saying amongst us, it was called sprint to the end. Sprint to the finish. Think of yourself, this whole process, as a marathon race. And the hardest part of the marathon is those last few miles. And it's that mindset to sprint to the end. Don't slack off from your, in your classes. See it through to the end. You've already put in all this hard work. Now is not the time to slack off. Finish like a, like the athletes that we had in here. They gave it their all. And, and that's how you need, need to finish the school year. And with that, I will turn the time.
Thank you. So I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you for everyone who is in attendance tonight for, to our meeting, our parents, our students, our staff. Congratulations to Carl on winning the Yes, I Can Award. Talk about perseverance and just encouraging others. Like, there is no reason why you should ever have a bad day, right? And if you're in the midst of having a bad day, think about Carl. Get you some crayons, get you some glitter. Do what you need to do to make your day better, right? I mean, there's just no reason. I also am just, I was very excited to celebrate our student athletes this evening from Glenn and Wayne Memorial. I really love when we refer to our student athletes as student athletes, right? Recognizing both their accomplishments in the classroom and then their accomplishments outside of the classroom. I also would like to say congratulations to Mr. Malloy for his honors and just really enjoy hearing him speak tonight, just really hearing his commitment to our students, to education, and to sports. Also, thank you to Meridian for their work with our students and getting them glasses. As I said, as someone that wears glasses, I tell everyone, when I take these glasses off, it's over. Like, don't send me a text message, nothing, because I can't see it. So I'm not responding. So I know the relevance and importance of having your glasses and having cute glasses, right? Because we all want to look cute. So I really am grateful for that. I'm also excited to share that I had the opportunity to spend the day in the district. And during that time, I was able to visit Mr. Lowe's Social Studies Classroom. And I was able to not only meet some of his students, but hear their projects as they're preparing to compete for National History Day. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to just wish his students the best of luck. Their competition is April 19th at Central, and the kids have done some phenomenal work. The projects are just so impressive. I too was able to enjoy the Uncorked On Tap event facilitated by the EEF. Thank you so much for that work, Maria and crew. Kim, I know you're a part of that committee as well, or that foundation. So thank you for all of your hard work. The purpose of the event, or the EEF period, is to support our teachers with innovative teaching practices and strategies to keep our students engaged in the classroom. And so I just appreciate that support for our teaching staff as well as for our students. I also attended the NSBA Annual Conference with three of my esteemed board colleagues. It was a great opportunity to learn and to fellowship with colleagues, not only my Wayne Westland colleagues, but colleagues from all over the nation. I attended several sessions, some regarding board governance, transformative leadership, portraits of a graduate, the school-to-prison pipeline, and AI or artificial intelligence. I also had the pleasure of meeting students who serve on their local school board as well as on the National School Board Association Board of Directors. So like Mr. Shannon, Mr. Rocha, I'm sorry. We've talked about adding student voice to our board table. We, and I know we're in the process of doing some other things in terms of getting our Congress together as ways to lift student voice. But I too would love to see us have students as a part of our board. And then next, I would also love to see Wayne Westland develop a portrait of a graduate. So then that way, not only do our students know, but our parents know, our staff knows. We talk about, this is what we want our graduates to leave with. This is what we want our, how we want our graduates to look. That helps us to ensure students are prepared for life after graduation. I also want to address, I believe it was a question in regards to having items put on the agenda. And so in our policy or our board operating procedures on page five, under section 1.1, it talks about how to get an item placed on the agenda. It is actually 1.1, 1.1.1, item B, which talks about board trustees must request in writing or verbally to the superintendent and board president at least seven days prior to the board meeting any items they desire to have placed on the agenda at the discretion of the superintendent and board president. So we welcome receiving anything that anyone, any board member would like to have placed on the board agenda. And with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion for an adjournment.
So move.